Good morning and welcome to the Paulding County Board of Commissioners October 11, 2016 Work Session. We're proud you're here today. Reminds you to turn off all cell phones. Next hills, I don't know if anybody hesitates or not, but in the world, as it does interrupt. Marshall, will you bring the sign in?
Our invocation and pledge is brought to us this morning by Pastor Jim Castle with Hearts on Fire Ministries. So if you'll come to the lectern, stand with me here.
Dear Father God, we've just come before you this morning and we're just so grateful for your goodness. We declare this morning, Father, in this hall that you're a good God. And Lord, I thank you that this morning you will give us wisdom. For Father, I thank you that when you give man wisdom, Father, that your plans can succeed here in the earth. Father, many are the plans in a man's heart, but Lord, it is only your plans that succeed. It is your plans that prosper. So Lord, this morning, we're asking that you would just help us to lay down each and every one of our own agendas so that we can pick up your righteous cause. God, we're asking you to have your way in our lives. We're asking you to have your way in this community and we're asking you to have your way in this county. Father, we give you all praise and the glory and the honor for that in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Let it be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Hearts on Fire, he sounds like Hearts on Fire. Bo. Like to recognize our elected officials. Here today, we have our High Sheriff, Terry Gullidge. I saw school board member, Kim Cobb. Chairman-elect Dave Carmichael. I'm listening, Vance. Thank you all for being here and all of our guests. Minutes, the September 27, 2016 Work Session minutes and the September 27, 2016 Board Meeting minutes are available for your review. Now I'd like to talk about election coming up soon. Ms. Holden, do you have a moment to give us a little brief overview?
Yes, thank you for asking me to come this morning. I come this morning very excited and I want to share something with you all. Today is the voter registration deadline for the state of Georgia. And the past two days of our lives have been absolutely crazy, but I wanted to give you some numbers just so you would go because I know the public is constantly asking you things. But when we were going into the primary in May, Paulding County had 93,459 registered voters. As of today, we have 97,578. We have increased 4,119 voters since May. And I promise it'll go up a couple of thousand before this week's over. In 2012, going into the presidential election, we had 85,923 registered voters. And that is an increase of what we have to date of 11,655 voters. I say this because everything this county has been through over the past several years, these numbers prove to me that people are still coming to this county, that Paulding County has a lot to offer and they want to be here. So that speaks volumes about this county. It makes me very proud to represent this county. As I said, today is the voter registration deadline. I want to challenge the public to get on Facebook, social media, and tell people to register to vote today. Last night when I left, we had roughly 300 registrations sitting on our dashboard that people had registered online at 5:00 this morning. I checked it and we're up to almost 2,000 in just one day. So people are registering to vote. I'm absolutely excited, but the key is that they get out and vote. So with that being said, early voting will start this coming Monday, October 17. We'll be here in the county administration building. We are converting the cafeteria into the election office. We will have eight clerks that will be taking care of the voters as to where we normally have four. We will have 25 voting machines instead of 15. We are expecting a massive turnout. You will stand in line. There's no way around it, but we will deal with people as quickly as we can. October 31 through November 4, we will open our additional locations of Mount Tabor Park, Poplar Springs Baptist Church, and Burne Hickory Park. The election office will continue to be open for early voting, but that week we will extend the hours from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We want everyone to come out and vote. October 29, this Saturday voting, here in the election office, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So all of this information is available on our website. For those of you that don't know if you're registered up here in the public, go onto our website. You can link to the Secretary of State website, go to my voter page, and find out if you are registered. We want everybody to know before they go to vote where they're supposed to vote if they're registered, and we have time to take care of those issues right now. So there again, thanks to all those who have just come in and registered and I hope to see all of them on Election Day. Do you all have any questions?
If there's a miscue, you still are allowed a provisional ballot?
Yes, a provisional. We don't turn any voters away. They will vote provisional ballot and our board will decide if that vote counts.
When I first started voting, I remember when you had absentee, you had to prove that you were going to be out of town. It was hard to get an absentee ballot. Now you get an absentee ballot just because you're on primary register.
Exactly. And we have sent out most to 2,000 absentees and we have got 700 that have been returned voted. And I'm glad you said that, David, because I want y'all to know that we are sending ballots to our military and our missionaries all over the world. So we have sent out over 100 ballots to parts of the world some that I've never even heard of. So people are very interested in voting and they are going to vote. So I think I challenge all of you to get out and talk to your family and friends and get them to go to the polls or to come vote early.
And also, thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. I have some very, very sad news. We had a tragic loss in our sheriff's department with the loss of Alicia Brewer-Hildreth. I believe Alicia was around 34, 35 years old and not sure what happened yet. Could have been a heart attack, but a tragic loss, young person in our community. A lot of people know the Brewer family and that she's outstanding, but so y'all keep them in your prayers. Make the announcement that, as Deidre just talked to you, that the November 8 Work Session and Board Meetings have been moved and we'll move those to Thursday, November the 10th for 10:00 a.m. and a 2:00 p.m. Board Meeting because of the Election Day. The Transportation Department, Scott Green, I think you want to talk about the completion ceremony of the Bill Cruse Parkway.
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to add an announcement after that, if it's all right. In two weeks from today, we will be having a pre-ceremony to open our road, our road at last, the road. We've been working on Bill Cruse Parkway for a long time, it seems like. We're a few months behind, but in two weeks, we will have it open. We'd like to invite y'all out to come out after the morning session. It'll be about 11:00 or 11:30, whenever we wrap up, we can head that way and celebrate the road completion. And then we'll have a few more barrels to take up that day and turn it loose. And that's exciting for us. Been a long job to get it done. I know everybody's anxious to get out there and use all the lanes that are available.
This is one of, been one of your larger projects?
This is the largest project we've ever done. It's not pure dollars, but you know, as far as completing the overall loop around Hiram, this is our keynote, you know, and a big priority of yours in your administration, get this road finished.
Thank you, Scott. That's great news.
Thank you. And then I'd like to add, Georgia DOT is holding a public hearing, open house, for the section of Highway 92 from Crossroads North to 41. And we've talked a lot about Highway 92 and what's happening with that corridor in Paulding County. It's an extremely important corridor for us. We know it's moving, but we haven't seen dirt turning. They're buying right away on the south end from Douglasville to Hiram. And they are preparing to get to that point from Crossroads North, but they have to hold a hearing first. This is the, I think will be the last hearing for the environmental document. It'll be a chance for residents to come and look at the plans, ask questions, find out where median breaks are, where the final, basically what the final alignment and what the final width of the road will be as it affects the citizens. It's also a chance for our traveling public to come if they would and leave comments saying, please hurry. We need this road. You can go and leave positive comment as well. It's not just about how it affects your front yard or a particular business. We've had a lot of calls on it, so I want to clarify, this is from Burne Hickory, Old Burne Hickory Road, which is down by the fire station at Crossroads, turning the corner, going north, 92 all the way to 41. And you can talk to Georgia DOT designers, right-of-way agents, and all those folks. You can leave a comment. It is a drop-in, so you don't have to be there the entire time. It's a 5 to 7 open house, like I said, two, one week from today, 5 to 7 at Russam Elementary. And you can just drop in anytime during those two hours. And if you'd like, you can leave a comment, you can ask questions and leave. There's no scheduled agenda.
Do Georgia DOT do run up some of our projects they've done in-house themselves? Some went out to consultants. Do you know if this one was?
This is consultant. Georgia DOT is largely a consultant design initiative now. They do still design in-house. And we're thankful because the additional resources they're putting on this corridor, they've turned a lot of it over to right-of-way teams that are consultants and right-of-way, or excuse me, engineering terms, teams that are consultants. So that will mean it could move faster. So we're hopeful to see that happening as well as the rest of the corridor.
And we'll be interested in the future to hear about Third Army. I think you lost one of your good people, but they ended up at Cobb, so maybe they helped us with Third Army.
Hope so. And we'll hear more about Third Army Road soon. We are coordinating with Cobb. They are doing environmental study of the interchange right now and we hope to partner with them to move into a final design early next year. And hopefully they will continue to do that. That is a priority. It's actually mostly in Bartow County, so we're thankful that Cobb is carrying most of the water on this and we're supporting them every way we can. Thank you.
Scott, that meeting's the 18th, is that correct?
Yes, I'm sorry if I didn't include that.
The 18th?
Okay, so that's one week from tonight or today, 5 to 7 at Russam. Thank you.
Yeah, we did everything about where and what time. Chief Alfred, if you'll come forward, I think you got a new baby out back. A little nervous.
I wouldn't necessarily call it a baby.
Yes, we do have the new trucks out back. You requested for it to be here. We're going to have it out back so everybody can come out and look at it if they like. We have some more equipment to put on, but it's a monster, the big truck. Very proud of it. Everybody come out and enjoy and take a look at it.
This was acquired through a grant, but I understand we got a lot of help from Senator Isaacson on this.
We did.
So we don't need to forget about that on Election Day.
That's right.
As he's running now, I understand we acquired this because we didn't have a truck that would go to the top of the West Star Hospital.
Well, yes, that's one of the things. We just have a lot of buildings in this county that'd be good for to use, not just the hospital, but a lot. The hospital's a, is a very well-built hospital with fire codes and all and fire protection, but we do need it in case of rescue. But it's also going to be great to use for the apartment complexes that we have, as well as the large facilities such as Home Depot and Walmart.
Right.
And we are going to have a ceremony. We have a little tradition called completion ceremony. We'll be inviting them there along with Senator Isaacson and Tom Graves.
Right. And you have it out back?
It should be out back. Say we're told to have it out back. I'm sure it is.
Okay. You all are invited to go down after the meeting and take a look at Joe's new baby. No invited guest. Bid awards, discuss action to award smart net maintenance contract to the low bidder course 360 in the amount of $212,179.82.
Good morning. This is an annual contract. We bring it every year about this time. We bid it out. We had two participants and the spread was about $10,000 between the two bids. Technology, information technology, so pleased to bid. It is a little more than it was in the past. That's due to some aging equipment, as well as we had to acquire traditional licenses. Want some additional licenses to afford to support the big auction line. Technology's great, but they have things fixed where it'll only last seven years and then you have to make a purchase again. So unless you have any questions? Will's also available if you have any technical questions.
Number two, discuss action to award the purchase of an asphalt faber ASC construction equipment in the amount of $322,995. This is your new baby, but you did a bid on that.
We did. Actually, we're purchasing this off of the state contract. So the list price was 378 and the DOAS price was 227. And then you have the attachments, bringing the total price to 322. This will allow DOT in-house staff to be able to pay more rates. I think Scott gave you a couple of pictures of what they've been using and it's outdated and it's having some trouble. We had some maintenance issues. The current ones, total maintenance cost of about $70,000. And due to the age of the equipment, we maintenance too much and was not recommended investing that money in this equipment to make the purchase.
It looks like a dinosaur.
It's very large.
Yeah, it looks like a dinosaur. I'd be worried. It is. Number three, discuss action to award 2016 line strapping project to the low bidder peak pavement marking LLC in the amount of $308,239.80 for line strapping on 20 various roads in Paulding County. This is George Jones. Is George doing this or are you doing this, sir?
I think Scott's going to do this.
Okay.
This is a follow-up. Not too long ago, we received a grant with an LNE grant to cover a portion of this cost. And, sorry.
This is a grant-funded project to improve safety on local roads. Georgia DOT put this out for candidates to present project lists. We put together a project that included restrapping 20 roads covering 38 miles of county road, as well as doing some signal upgrades. This is, most part of this is the strapping. It is partly funded by the grant. Our minimum match is 30% typical with paving. LNE program we have. Because of the additional roads and some of the signal work we're putting in here, our match is going to be a little bit higher. It's going to be about 36% to get this funding. And this is part A basically of that. And we'll have another contract coming back to you later. And we do have to get work underway this year. We have to cover the money before the end of the year. So I expect some of this work will extend out into next year as we get roads ready and strapping. This is a low bid project. We did have three bidders and we recommend Orange Peak.
Have they even done some work for us in the past?
Yes, they're one of the major strapping companies in Georgia.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Reports from committees, none. Only participation on agenda items. No one signed up. Consent agenda, there are five consent agenda items. Number one, accept dedication of Pine Ridge Lane with right-of-way of 60 feet, a length of 0.45 miles or 2,379 feet from Seven Hills Boulevard to Dead End as a county maintained road. That is my explanation. Number two, authorize chairman, quick lane, 0.26 acres of excess right-of-way along Harmony Grove Church Road near the old single lane bridge over Pumpkin Mine Creek. Number three, appoint Lamar Clark to the Paulding County zoning board of appeals with a term ending December 31, 2016. We had a gentleman that was serving on that that moved out of state, so he replaced. Approve the personnel request to add a wastewater lab analyst within the water system, as well as equipment list for fiscal year 2017. I believe y'all got information on that. Is anything else that needs to be discussed on that?
I don't think so, not unless, not unless you got questions. It's just basically we need to add the initial personnel and there are a couple of the capital items that we mentioned that would be, that are necessary in the operations of the park to make it more efficient. The park's budget is a flexible budget and so if these items that are listed here are only available purchase if residents are there to support them. One of the other things that we want to make sure we mention is are the metering. So we change our meters every month. We have 42,000 plus customers. Sometimes those meters will become faulty because of the age and so we're continuously changing those out over time. That's fairly expensive. What we would like to do is go to AMI, a remote read, but we are not directly requesting to do that right now. But the meters that we are using are compatible with those AMI meters so that we can change them out in the future at a minimal cost.
Number five, approve the following subdivision stretch for professional maintenance. Management department of Seven Hills, usually one of those four, I.D. Hall Lane, Spanish of Way, May Flaw, Court, and Wagon, Wagon, Oak Trail. Would you like to move any of these items to a resection? Hearing none, there's no old business under new business. Public hearing for abandonment of a remnant right-of-way for Fortwood Circle. Scott, you want to tell us a little bit about this before we get started?
Yes, thank you. Back in the 70s, I guess, there was a practice, I think, of plating right-of-way, but not necessarily building the roads in a few locations in the county. This is a remnant right-of-way that was platted, but it was never, the road was never built. The right-of-way was never used or maintained by the county, as we can tell. A single owner has bought up the remaining lots around this right-of-way and has asked that we abandon this so they can have the land back and combine their lots into one larger lot. We have no objection. We don't perceive that any need of ever extending this road through the right-of-way. And the other half of the subdivision that was eventually going to make this a loop was never built, so it will never be a circle. Probably should be renamed. That's all I have to add, but because this is right-of-way on books, we decided to go ahead and do a hearing just to provide adequate opportunity for anybody to speak.
Okay, I'll open this public hearing on the abandonment of a remnant right-of-way for Fortwood Circle that you'd like to rename. Anybody wishing to speak on this item this morning? Hearing and seeing no comment, we will close this public hearing. Thank you very much. Number two, discuss action to adopt resolution 16-42 enacting Section 1-21 Official Code of Paulding County entitled, "Service of Citations."
I have asked for this to go on the agenda. Our marshal's office issued citations on county ordinance violations. Previously, the law stated that any ordinance citations had to be personally served upon the person. That was, or can be difficult if the person that's being cited does not live in Paulding County. That would most commonly happen when it's a person who owns a piece of property and they're renting it to another person. So trying to see if the owner serves is an issue. They changed the state law this session to include a provision for this issue for all city and county governments that says that you can, you attempt personal service and you cannot personally serve someone, then you're allowed to post a copy of the citation at the residence or on the premises where violation has occurred. You can mail a copy to the owner and file a copy of the citation with magistrate court and that would satisfy service provisions. So this is just an extra way for the marshal's office to be able to serve people when they have a citation.
Any questions? Number three, discuss action to approve memorandum of agreement with Condray and Associates Incorporated to conduct a job classification and compensation study, Brian Anker.
Good morning. As you're all aware, as part of the 2017 budget, you had discussion about doing classification and compensation study. It's overdue. It's a great thing for us to be able to do. I have before you a proposal from Condray and Associates to do that. They're based out of Athens, Georgia. Mr. Condray, or Dr. Condray, I should say, is retired from the Carleton Institute of Government, over 30 years' experience. The project coordinated for us will be Jan Anker, who also serves as a principal consultant with the Institute of Government. Encourage you to take it like that if you have any questions, but I'd like to give you a little bit of an overview as to what it is we're getting ourselves up to. Okay? We're talking about two different things here, both a classification and a compensation study. So with a classification study, that involves, as outlined in your backup material, approximately 40% of the employees, they actively involved in interview processes, employees would be doing jobs, questionnaires. Again, this will be done with Condray and Associates. They would do this project for us, maybe these employees, here updated job descriptions. From that, you establish a new job classification system. It's current system, it's updated. Given that, what do we want to do as far as compensation? Where do we stand as far as salaries with the market? That's the other component that you want to get that information. You look at comparables. I think the proposal outlines as many as 25 comparables. Take that, merge it all together and say, hey, here's your proposal for an updated classification and compensation system. Part of that involves just this is where you're at. If you want to revise and update and accept it as it is, that's what you got. You would also have some alternative proposals. Well, if you're lacking the market, how far do you lack the market? What would that involve? What's the proposal, not just structure program-wise, but what does that mean financially? What would come to you with that? Also, would have a proposal for, you know, if you want to plead the market, what would that involve? Take those options, you look at it, figure out where you want to get from there. The timeline for the process, Condray and Associates, is available to start. They can start this as early as November if you're agreeable with it. And we can have some results from them by March 31st, if agreed upon. Certainly that's something you can adjust or change if you would like. If you have any questions, be glad.
I think the timeline's good.
We can get right on it if it's agreeable with y'all. And that's great because this is, you know, the scope of the project, this is not something that we're going to have this quick to turn around on. I had asked, in preparing the side of today's agenda, spoke to Mr. Condray and Dr. Condray last week. He said, yeah, timelines are good, we can do it.
Thank you. We need, thank you. Ryan? Any questions? Number four, discuss action to approve resolution 16-43 allowing Paulding County investment of bond funds in Georgia Fund 1.
At the last meeting, you adjusted the investment policy to allow us to invest
At the last meeting, you adjusted the investment policy to allow us to invest in some agencies. This will allow us to invest some funds into Georgia Fund One. We would like to keep some of the funds liquid because we'll need them tomorrow and March while we're using the G funds for anything that's not reimbursable by G funds. However, bond funds are held very strictly as, they're held in custody of custodians, so we don't, I can't even access those funds without that custodian. So what this does, we already got an account with Georgia Fund One. What this does is gives, opens another account in a custodian's name. What we will do is we will requisition to the custodian, and the custodian will actually make withdrawal from Georgia Fund One. Last week, we did some bidding for the other funds that were available. So the capitalized interest, we were able to invest that at eighty-seven basis points. And the construction fund, we were able to invest that as in three basis funds. And those are, those are not callable, so they're in treasuries, not redeemable until they mature. This will keep money liquid so that we can access the bidding itself, and it's invested. Georgia Fund One currently earning thirty-nine basis points. Unless you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. In the middle of our meeting, we did have Harem Police Chief Todd Van De Zander, or better known as Chief Van, at leisure to stay. Thank you for being here. Appreciate you. That's the conclusion of our regular business session. We do have an executive session. There's no citizens wishing to speak, so primarily, our business partner meeting will be over after this. We will return usually and adjourn if there's no citizen wishing to speak. Do I have your motion to go into executive session for the purpose of rule of state?
Motion to go into executive session for the purpose of rule of state.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we'll return very shortly. We are back in open session. No, what is it? No action taken? No action taken in executive session? Your motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.